Gentlemen, welcome. We have a number of items to discuss today. I'm going to turn it over to our county manager to get it all rolling.
All right, commissioners. Today, we're going to talk about a number of economic development and community development funding requests. One of them actually is going to be pulled off the table, thank goodness, but we are -- Brent Shelton's going to lead us in this discussion, and I'll let him take it away.
Good morning. Commissioners, staff members. Again, I'm Brent Shelton with the Division of Finance, and the original agenda called for four different external funding requests to be discussed. As the manager mentioned, one of those, which is the fourth one on your overview sheet, was pulled yesterday. We drew their request for $10,000. I might add that I'm much too humble to mention all the kind things they had to say about their interactions with staff as they went through that process. But anyway, let's look at the three funding requests that are before you this morning. The first one is the Kansas Aviation Museum. There's a request from Greater Wichita Partnership, and then one from the Kansas National Resources Coalition. Probably the best way to do this is we'll just take them. I'll give you a brief overview, open it up for discussion, and then we'll move forward, and based on your guidance, we'll take action. The Kansas Aviation Museum is requesting $250,000 from Sedgwick County. It's a five-year request, $50,000 per year, beginning in 2018. They originally approached the county last year, late summer, early fall, with this request, and in December, the commission decided to not provide any county support for 2017. So this would be a new request, a new funding support from the county going forward. As you know, the Aviation Museum is located out by McConnell in the old Wichita Municipal Airport. It's an Art Deco building that is on the county or the National Historic Register, and they would propose to use the county's funding support basically for building maintenance purposes. Tuck pointing, a lot of things were required to keep that building suitable for its listing on the registry. As part of the funding process, they filled out a questionnaire. It was updated with their year-end financial information from 2017. They provided us their 2018 budget. They've got a budget of about $475,000. They submitted to us a balanced budget for 2018. That balanced budget did not include any county funding support. So what we are recommending at this time is that we haven't earmarked any money for 2018 for the Aviation Museum, but that we would put them through the process, the budget process, for 2019, withhold any funding at this point in time. It's a quick overview, and I'll answer any questions and open it up for discussion.
Questions from the commissioners?
What's the next step? I mean, is that, does this go on the agenda? I mean, if you don't hear anybody saying anything today, then what happens?
I would probably assume that that's, you don't want to fund them for 2018, and we would let them know that we would consider them as part of the 2019 budget process.
And I don't have a problem with the, we've already got our budget set for 2018. We've got a very, very small surplus in 2018. Rather than tapping into that, I think that we need to put them into the budget process for 2019 and see how it falls out at that point.
Question, I have a question as well. Mr. Chairman, I'm just curious, so if this was going to get funded, would this money come from the economic development fund, or where would it come from?
It would probably come more of a community development area lined up with our cultural expenditures for museum funding and things of that nature.
Would actually have to probably, since this is a new, and it would come out of the general fund, but we would put it in the community development fund underneath him and his area. But it would be, it would be new.
Because I guess what I understand is that the budget does have a line item for economic development that's not really totally defined. It's something we work on through the year, I guess, is the policy behind what that fund is used for, so.
We have a community development and an economic development line item that we can allocate money towards to use for these types of projects.
Okay.
Or requests.
The only thing I'd say, the only thing I'd say about this is, as I've, as I've thought about this, any support that I would have on this, again, I'm still in the thinking mode, but any support I would have on this, I would like to say, to me, the one-time money is much easier to discuss or to consider because you're looking at budget performance, you're looking at, you know, that, you know, this request versus any other request and how our budget's performing, that type of thing. You're trying to figure out, I guess it's a one-time decision. But what I'm a little bit concerned about is any, any characteristic that looks like it's long-term funding. In other words, if it's $50,000 a year times five years, then the assumption, I guess, I would have would be that before you get to the sixth year, or the, towards the end of the five years, you're going to have another request for another $250,000 for another five years. So it becomes something like just a normal funding agreement, and it doesn't, to me, that's not one-time money. That sets us up for an expectation of long-term funding forever, and then to back out of that ends up becoming very politically difficult. So, you know, one-time, one-time consideration is, in my opinion, more acceptable, I guess, than the idea that we would do a long-term funding agreement, so to speak. So I would say, look at this year by year rather than a five-year agreement. That's what I would prefer to see us do, but maybe not at the beginning of the fiscal year, but maybe towards the end of the fiscal year.
We almost, we almost kind of do that because we have to vote on that line item every year. But if we developed a memorandum of agreement or understanding that stated we would give them five separate payments, then we are kind of locked into that. Otherwise, every year, we do vote on those separately each year on whether we're going to support it or not.
And along that line, I think, again, trying to remember the details here, but it was around November, or maybe even early December, just a few months ago, we kind of went through this with, you know, kind of wrapping up fiscal, you know, fiscal '17, and there were some decisions made about, you know, some, you know, our budgets were performing, there were things we wanted to do, wanted to do because we felt, we felt like we had the ability to do it at that one time, but it wasn't something we're obligating someone five years from now for. So I guess, I would much rather have a discussion about this a little bit later this year, you know, towards the end of the year, when the budget's getting closer to the end of the year, to see how the budget's performing, and we can kind of weigh this amongst anything else that we want to think about at that time. And I would much rather have it to be a one-time decision about fiscal, whatever fiscal year we're talking about, rather than obligating someone five years from now to come up with another chunk of money. We're not, we have no idea how the budget's going to perform at that point. So that's just my opinion.
Okay. Any comments on that?
Well, we have five-year operating agreements with other agencies that are specifically our ownership. So I understand the museum's perspective in wanting a longer-term commitment. If I was them, I would want a longer-term commitment. I mean, that's the way you can make longer-term plans, so. But the point is, for us, is do we want to adopt another museum? We've got Exploration Place, and we have got Sedgwick County Zoo, and we have had ongoing support of the African-American Museum, and do we want to be a bigger supporter of the Aviation Museum than the city of Wichita is a supporter of it, when it's their museum? So I'm, I don't know, I think, for me, that's the question, do we want to adopt another museum? And so talking about it in next year's budgets is, or in the '19 budget, I think it's the right thing to do, but I also think it's, for me, it needs to be honed down to a, just an annual grant if they have a specific request that they can't seem to get funded any other way for a certain project, because just jumping on board for operational support, it sounds like an adoption to me, and I don't want to do that.
Wasn't the first year more of that B-52, trying to preserve that rather than tuck point in the building and so forth? I thought their proposal said that they wanted to try and preserve that B-52 first of all.
Right. That's one of their, I guess, one of their projects, and they gave us a list of projects that they have, ongoing, current, and years out.
But they gave it year by year. It seems like the B-52 was the number-one priority, and I think probably is. That plane was built here in Wichita. That plane, the surface of the wings is made out of, I don't remember what metal it's made out of. Jim might know, Commissioner Howell might know better than I do, but evidently, it has corroded very badly. Another museum had a B-52, and because of the corrosion on it, they ended up having to scrap the B-52. And that's what's going to happen to that B-52 out there eventually, if those wings aren't fixed. And they're not looking at replacing it so that it's flyable. I think it would be more like putting a roof on a house rather than putting top of wings on, but it preserves the plane. So I guess I have some concerns that that first year, the chance of losing a B-52 out there that was made in Wichita concerns me. And I think Commissioner Howell has probably a good suggestion to look at the end of this fiscal year, or at least not the end of the fiscal year, more towards the time we go into the 2019 budget process and see where we're at funding-wise on those two line items, and maybe we can do something earlier rather than later. My big concern is the B-52 right now.
Well, about the, we'll give you, you know, the manager's recommendation in the June, so you'll vote on it till end of July?
Middle of August.
Middle of August, so you have some time to analyze it.
Okay. Well, I just don't want it to die, and I don't want to lose the B-52 out there.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also say, based on the previous commissioner's comments, I'm not interested in providing operation money. I think project money that's for specific things out there, might even be, maybe it's even in-kind potentially. You know, for example, the parking lot might need help, and I'm not trying to obligate public works in any way, but just an idea, a matter of discussion, for example, maybe that would be something we could, to them, it has a higher value, but to us, it's not as expensive perhaps, because we've got some other process, maybe some other projects nearby. We could leverage, you know, a magnitude of scale perhaps, and that type of thing. So, you know, the idea of this as operation money, in my opinion, that's the thing I don't want the very most. I don't think the operations is something I'm interested in at all, but if it's a project, if it's project-based and it's understood this is a limited, one-time-type support for something, and our budgets are performing at that point, I'm more open to the idea at that time. It's just not the right time right now to have that discussion, for me.
Is there a consensus that we wait until about June and revisit this to see if, and I think we need to verify that that first year is project money rather than operations money?
Okay.
And I think we need to verify that, I'm pretty sure it's for the B-52 and not for the building.
Okay. I think that was in their original request back in 2017, and when stuff was updated, they spoke more toward earmarking the money toward buildings, so.
Okay. So is there a consensus to revisit this in June?
And the building belongs to City of Wichita, is that correct?
That's right. City owns it, and they lease it to the museum.
But again, I'm not talking about building myself right now. I'm talking about preserving the plan.
Okay. So at this point, no funding. We'll bring it back up in June, and at that point, we can get direction, whether it's 2018 or 2019 money.
And I think I'm hearing two things. I'm hearing almost a decision package kind of discussion for '19, but wait till later in the year to see if there could be some '18 monies available.
Correct.
Correct.
Brent has developed the process by which we'll bring the request to the commission out of the new way there will be a stop, or that that's it. So that would be the process language, and then the '19 budget, and then for this year, if we just talk about it, and just for that discussion.
Okay. We'll talk about it during June.
Very good. Okay. Hopefully, it'll be a warmer day. The second one, then, would be a funding request for the Greater Wichita Partnership. Now, this is a request that is outside the historical funding support that the county has provided to GWP. We currently are providing them with $300,000 per year. That's been identified as part of the general fund allocation, and that money has been provided to GWP and their predecessor, GWEDC, since 2009. Prior to that, from 2004 to 2008, there was a quarter of a million dollars a year in county funding support. So that's not what we're speaking about today. This is an additional request that would be for $45,000. The $45,000 is one-third of the cost of standing up a consultant to go into GWP and look at a couple of things. And we'd instantly be one of the, the other two partners of the City of Wichita and Greater Wichita Partnership. So the consultant would have a couple of goals going in. One is to look at the organizational structure, the strategic plan, and help develop a strategic plan for the Greater Wichita Partnership, and how they are an economic development driver, and what their role is in the community, how the local governments play into that, how the business community plays into that, and so forth. The second focus of that consultant study would be to expand or bring some clarity to the BRIG discussion. We are currently, we've got a, an economic activity cluster that's focused on aerospace. There's some other initiatives out there, but to build these initiatives and diversify the local economy would be another focus of the consultant. How do we go about doing that? So what you're looking at today is $45,000, one-time deal to fund a consultant, partially fund a consultant that helps reorganize, if you will, GWP, and helps develop that overarching strategic plan for economic development for our region. That's something that we've heard that we need to develop and need to figure that out. This is the first step in doing that.
Comments? Questions? Commissioner?
Well, I just heard about this yesterday afternoon, and I guess I have some serious concerns. I mean, I mean, it talks about they need to bring more focus to GWP, develop a strategic plan, establish organizational structure, break clarity, innovation, strategies to work together. These are all things I thought they were already doing, and we were paying them for. $300,000 for three years. I think the budget is over a million a year. I mean, I mean, if they haven't already done this, then I think before we give them money, we need some sort of accountability, is who's not doing this stuff? I mean, I mean, this is, this is a damning request with respect to GWP. This makes it look like they're not competent. They haven't done what we paid them to do. They don't already have a strategic plan for organizational structure that is optimized? They don't, they need clarity in the BRIG, strategies to work together? I mean, we need some accountability. I mean, maybe we need, I don't know. I mean, we've got to look at that. I mean, reevaluate, sort of giving them more money, reevaluate whether we should be giving them any money, or they need some changes in management or leadership or something. I mean, I'm very, this is just, I don't get it. I mean, how can they not already have a strategic plan? What have they been doing for three years?
Well, I think it goes back to the concerns that I've expressed a number of times in the past, that we need an overarching, as they already said, strategic plan. And right now, GWP, BRIG folks are really operating at the tactical level rather than the strategic level, looking at what this region needs in order to have economic development. So they've looked at a couple of different companies to produce this for them. They brought it down to one company, I believe, that they're looking at to help develop the strategic plan for them, that will look at this, you know, long-term.
But I thought this whole thing was about a strategic area for, we were doing regionalism and all this other stuff. Why do we need a consultant? That's what we're paying these people for. I mean, if they can't do the, I mean, we're basically going to hire a consultant, tell them how to do their job. I don't get it. I mean, I thought, I mean, I hear all this stuff, that everything's hunky-dory, they're doing all great, but now it's in, I don't know, this is problematic. I mean, I mean, three years? I don't, I don't get it. I mean, I guess.
We've been asking for a strategic plan for some time, and we're developing strategic plans here in Sedgwick County. We're looking at economic development here, but we need to be a partner to make sure that it happens at the regional level.
Why can't they just do it with, I mean, are you saying they're not capable of doing it themselves?
They have a company now that they went out on RFP to, to develop this strategic plan.
Well, I think they, if they need this much help, first of all, it's problematic that I wouldn't give them any more money. Make them, make them use the assets they have right now, reallocate or something. I mean, if they're this dysfunctional, then whatever they're spending money on elsewhere, they need to re-put it into something that, I mean, they need to put it in that they establish priorities, if this is that important, and, but at the same time, there, I mean, there needs to be some accountability as to why this stuff hasn't already been done. Who's dropping the ball? I mean, do we care about that? Or, I mean, otherwise, I thought this were stuff is what BRIG was all about, so, I'm hurt by BRIG, but GWP and BRIG. I don't know. Like I say, I just, I'm just basing this, based upon this, I just heard about it last night, but it's troubling, so I guess I am not prepared to support it, but I would need to have some more information and some assurance, and there'll be some accountability for who hasn't been doing their job.
Well, the company they're looking at to do this has done this over and over across the country with a number of areas. They're qualified to do what the GWP is asking them to do, and they've got a more strategic view than they've got over in GWP.
Yeah, but we're talking about BRIG, too. Bring clarity, innovate anyways. I mean, we've got, we've got, in addition, we put money into, we've given extra money into the BRIG deal, too, haven't we? We've been doing that.
I just think we put money in initially to do a survey, and before it actually got stood up, we put $40,000 in through a four-year.
Last year, we did another $50,000 or something into.
I think, are you referring to the export plan or the?
Yeah, import-export one, which is related to this BRIG, isn't it?
It's related, but it's, I mean, it's honestly, that's part of the problem. It's actually kind of separate from it. It's not part of BRIG. It's a separate export plan, but it's under the ownership of GWP. I think with a strategic plan, planning process, what they'll find is the FBI export plan, what they're doing with BRIG, developing a regional economic development plan, all of that would be rolled up into an overarching plan, implementation plan. They do not have that right now. What they have done over the last few years in developing BRIG, they have the right framework, they actually have the right community partners around the table now, that bringing in a company or consultant that does nothing but do implementation plans, and have done some very successful ones around the country for already established economic development teams, that it would definitely give us a strategic plan to be able to collaborate and synergize what we already have out there. And right now, we just don't have that, and this company would do that for us.
Well, I'll go back to, first of all, they should have already had a strategic plan, tack that in, it's very troubling, don't, very troubling, but let's use, you know, let's use existing resources or have the private sector fund this. We have already used enough taxpayer dollars, and if they've not been efficient or effective, I mean, they're going to have to find some other way to fund it, and somebody needs to demand accountability.
Well, you know, we've kind of known the last couple of years that they haven't had a strategic plan, because we gave them the measurables that we wanted to see, the actions that we wanted them to concentrate on as part of the GWP. The list that they carry out in their, in their information packets is the list that we provided them to actual measure themselves by. But that should be part of an overarching strategic implementation plan, and they don't have that right now. But there should be the same measurables for every priority that they have, and they don't have that right now. But this company would provide that and be able to build that for them.
This plan fixes exactly what I've been talking about the last year, is that there is no plan, no strategic plan. We have a whole lot of little pockets in here, and they're looking at different items, but that doesn't, we can't tell how that that matches up with an overarching strategic plan, because there isn't one.
Okay, so who's failed? Who has failed to do their job? Do we know? Do we want to know?
I don't know if anyone failed to do the job, or they just didn't recognize the difference between having these little pockets of plans and what those have to feed into an overall plan. It takes, I guess, a different kind of thinker to look at where we're going and see into the future, to see that we have to have all of these things aligned, all of these different projects, all of these different proposals aligned, to meet one goal, instead of looking at all these different pockets individually. And that's the way they've been looking at them. They've been looking at pockets individually.
Do we need new leadership there then, someone that can do that? Because otherwise, you're going to do a, you're going to do a plan, and you still have the same people there, and they're not capable of doing what you say you want them to do, then.
Well, I think they're recognizing now what we've been saying, that they're not doing that. So I don't know that you need different leadership. We just need to convince them that we have to have an overall plan, some goal to be shooting at.
Well, if you do, you want to convince them of that, you say, listen, either you fix this, or we're not going to fund you anymore. And you find the money, then what we've already given you, or private sector, you've got to hold them accountable. We're just throwing more money at it. They should have already done this. I think we all know this.
But they've recognized it. They've recognized it, that's why they went out with an RFP.
I think also, if you look at the last few years in terms of where they've come from, they were a GWEDC, where they were focused on really more of a localized, you know, downtown economic development, whereas they, over the last year and a half, they've actually transitioned to a bigger partnership, a GW. So they have gone through, since we started giving them money for this purpose, they have changed organizations. They have gone from a more localized organization to a more collaborative regional organization. But based off of that transition, they have not developed a strategic or a strategy to be able to look at regional economic development. This would help them based off of their new organizational structure. They haven't had that, and they haven't been set up for success. At least with this, they would have a blueprint, or at least an implementation plan to follow to be able to support regional economic.
I get what you're saying, but I'm saying, they should have already had this. We've given them $300,000 a year. Why don't they use existing resources, use the private sector, do it? I mean, we're not demanding, I mean, we're kind of talking around ourselves, yeah, they didn't do it, but we, it's like we don't want any accountability for them not doing their basic job. And now, if we've got to have somebody that understands. uh, for them not doing their basic job. And, and now if, if we've got to have somebody that understands strategic plans, if, if they weren't able to recognize before, now they're just recognizing because we're, I mean, there's got to be some changes. I think, we, we've got to be honest with ourselves. We just, I know there's a lot of friends in there and friendships and we don't want to, you know, it's kind of tough. But if somebody's not doing a job, I don't know, I don't know who, if somebody's not doing the job, then we, you know, we, we have the responsibility of taxpayer to hold somebody accountable, or maybe the whole organization is dysfunctional. I don't know what the problem is, but this is very basic stuff that we're asking them to do. It should have already been done.
Well, I think it's important that we fund it, uh, to get a strategic plan because that meets the goals that I've been talking about all along.
It, it seems like everybody is in agreement. We need a strategic plan and we need economic development. And so we have, it hasn't got, we don't have the plan that we think's workable or the right plan, whatever. So, we have no plan. So we've got to get one. So the private sector partners and everyone sitting at the table, they already set their budgets for this year, but they've all come to the agreement that the, the partnership's going to put in some money, city of Wichita is going to put in some money. They're asking the county to put in some money. It just seems to me like we're part of this, um, we're part, we're part of the partnership and the deficiencies that you pointed out, I, it's hard to argue against that, but we've got to get the strategic plan and this is the way they've decided to do it. And they want to assess everybody, the three main pieces, forty-five thousand dollars to get there. So the real question is, are we going to be supportive in order to get what we want? Or we just?
Why is this, this seems to be weighted more heavily on the taxpayer than it is on the private sector. Why is that? I mean, if it's that important, let's have the private sector step up. I mean, the whole thing about GWP is, is, is the city and county do less and most, more of it's supposed to be private sector driven when all this is flipping it. I just have a problem. It's like we're telling the taxpayer, whoops, we've been paying some money and they haven't done a good job from that. We gotta give us more money and there's no accountability going to go along with it. Right? I mean, I, if, if, there's probably a reason why the private sector doesn't want to put their own money into it. They just, you know, I, I don't know.
Well, the, the overall budget of GWP is, is overwhelmingly private money. And, um, you know, we can say, no, we don't want to do it, but this is, this is the plan going forward. We're part of the partners and we either, we all agree it's got to be done even though, if you don't want to fund it. You, you, we agree we've got to have a strategic pan, plan, and this is what was decided by everybody at the table, the way to go forward. So our question is, do we want to be part of it or not? Because we know we've got to have a strategic plan.
I don't know who was at the table, but the taxpayers are the only one who's actually putting in more money into this deal. Because the money, the partnership's spending is, is money that's already been allocated. So taxpayer put in an extra ninety thousand dollars for, to do something they should have already done. And so it's easy for everyone else at the table to say, yeah, you guys put more of your money into it. Uh, but we're, but we're not going to have any accountability. So, gosh, guys, I, I understand. I mean, I think they ought to, I, I beg you, if they, if they really had to, they could find a way to do it with existing money. All right. I guess I'm probably the only one. I don't know.
Well, we'll find out. Do we have a consensus? Do we have anyone that's objected to this?
I, I actually have a couple of questions. Um, would that be okay? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm curious, has Wichita already made a commitment to this? Are they on board? Do we know?
Uh, I don't, I, I believe they are, but I, I don't want to speak for them.
Will our money be contingent on their support? I mean, so for example, if we commit, we say we have consensus to go forward, but can we, can we make our support to that to make sure that they follow through as well?
That, that would be up to the commissioners.
Okay. That would help me, um, knowing that they're part of the, part of that. So I, I, I'd like to have that as part of the criteria for support. How, how long will this take? I mean, assuming that this money becomes available, what's the timeline for this?
It's, it's about a nine-month time limit, from the start of the analysis, the SWAT, uh, till the end. And then it's obviously, because it's a strategic plan, it's an ongoing initiative. So the same group would, would keep coming back and we would have regular contact with them.
So before the end of the year, we should get the answers, so to speak. Okay, good.
Yes.
Um, I, I agree with the chairman then. I, one of the things I think is frustrating, um, from a policymaker's perspective is that it's like there's a lot of, uh, organizations trying to do similar types of, types of things. And I'd like to see some coordination. Are these organizations supportive of this idea? That there's going to be a coordination between them and other organizations? I mean.
What, what organizations?
Well, you mentioned GWP and BRAG a minute ago. I'm just curious. We have, one of the frustrations, Mr. Chairman, is that, if I understand your comments from the past, is that there's been, there's other organizations that are eco-devo focused, um, economic development focused, but they're all kind of doing their own strategies, their own organization, doing things their own way. And that's, that, that this could, that this coordination is what frustrates, I think, us, in my opinion, is, is this an effort to try, trying to bring those different groups together to have a common, common, uh, effort between them? Is that what, is that what this is about?
Yes.
Are those groups all supportive of this? Are they willing to participate and then follow line, so to speak, with what are the results are?
I would say all those groups are represented in some form or fashion within the GWP now.
And I'm, I mean, I'm just, off the top of my head, I'm thinking, you know, we, we still talk about SCAD and WEBA and REAP and I guess what used to be WDDC. Um, that's some, I'm, that's off the top of my head, I'm sure, maybe others, but the, uh, the coordination of these various groups needs to be, I guess, part of the goal here so that we, our strategic plan includes who does what and how it's being done.
Yes, that is something that, um, I know this chairman and the past chairman have talked about. I know we have talked about it, uh, as part of being necessary for us to have a, a regional economic implementation plan. So we are pushing that.
And then finally, on, on the second, paragraph, this number, number two, they're in the middle of the page. Um, it says, bring clarity and innovative ways for blueprint regional economic growth to expand. We need to develop strategies to work together as a region to maintain and grow aerospace clusters for which we are known globally. What I'm wondering is, there's a lot of natural competition between Airbus and Boeing, which still has an influence to our community, obviously. Um, Bombardier and Textron Aviation, for example, and maybe other companies. There's natural competition between different groups within these clusters. And so I don't know if there's a, I'm not sure it's reasonable for the, um, these groups necessarily to want to, um, give up on any of their natural competitiveness, trying to advance their own products, their own profitability and their own success at the, at the potential of helping out their competitors. I don't know if that makes sense or not, but if, if this is trying to find a coordinated way for the aviation cluster to work together, I don't know that that necessarily is a reasonable goal. I mean, I think it's great we have a cluster, but in terms of thinking that Bombardier is going to work with Textron Aviation, for example, it's just, that doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, but there's still some, uh, blocking and tackling, meat and potatoes that you're going to need for any one of those companies, whether it's STEM education, the education pipeline, um, incentives that, uh, uh, educational incentives to get people to go to school, or whatever that is. Uh, those companies, uh, who are heavy in, in STEM education would still need those type of, uh, so there is commonality in areas, uh, but there are exclusive nature of any business where they're not going to share things. But, uh, obviously, we would need to, to take care of what we can and what they want to participate in.
Very good. And then the last thing I'd point out i- is that this is, uh, a plan to be funded, funded out of the Economic Development Fund. And there's money in the budget for this.
It'd be part of the general fund, economic development, um.
We have about 1.8 million in the economic development. We don't use, you know, all of it for.
With that, I, I feel like I'm supportive of the idea at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a consensus to move forward with forty-five thousand?
Sounds good.
We understand your concern.
I just, I just want to make one comment in, uh, in response to Jim's concern about competition. That's exactly right. I mean, they are hard competitors. However, when they have common, when they have common goals, they do work together and they help create NCAT. So I, I look at it in those more universal needs where they can work together. And I think BRAG is, is starting to really have some form that indicates that these things do work together. But that's not to discount that they're guerrilla warfighters too.
But, but, but part of this, uh, I can, this, part of this economic development plan, it's going to force these advisory councils, working groups to collaborate. Um, but right now, we even have like a, a talent management advisory council with many of the companies that you've talked about, a part of that, uh, as a means to come together, uh, as a council to determine those common areas in which, or initiatives that we can do to foster growth, to foster, um, you know, workforce development. So, uh, that is going on now, but I think with this, uh, plan, it's just going to, um, and we need strategy in order to grow, to produce economic development. So I think this will, will help that.
Mr. Chairman, I have one final question, and I'm sorry to ask a late question here, but you said something, Mr. Manager, or I think maybe you did, or it was Mr. Sheldon, I'm not sure of it. Once this is done and this report comes back, uh, is there going to be a request for continued funding to continue having this consultant continue to do more work after this initial effort? Is this a one-time, this is a one-time?
It's a one-time request. From there on, the GWP will have to manage the implementation plan. But as part of our cost for this company, uh, they are on a, on a short string to come back and, and, and help us, uh, maintain it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Their advisory role.
And by the way, um, Commissioner, I appreciate your answer to that. I, um, I think you're right on. I, I thank you for your explanation.
Thank you. I think we've got a consensus.
Yeah, I think we have a consensus, but I'd just say, I wouldn't be surprised if next year, the year after, they want to ask for more money. I mean, this doesn't guarantee they won't.
No. But as part of the, the package or the contract.
Correct.
For this particular plan, now there may be an adjunct or supporting action plan that they need for something else that would require. But for this particular plan, uh, it's built into it that they, and that was one of the, the major tenants that we went into it with, is that they are, uh, able to come back and, and, and help us if we need them.
Okay. I think we're done with this item. I think we've got a consensus.
Very good.
Next item.
Okay. The third and final external funding request under consideration today would be for the Kansas Natural Resources Coalition. It's a five thousand dollar request and it is an annually recurring membership. So this is a recurring request. The Kansas Natural Resources Coalition, or KNRC, is a Kansas-based organization that advocates for, um, advocates for counties, um, on the, as a, they advocate for counties to kind of stave off federal regulation, I guess is the most succinct way that I can put it. They are comprised of twenty member counties in Kansas. They are fully funded by these membership dues, five thousand dollars per year times the twenty, uh, twenty counties. Their budget for 2018 is a hundred twelve thousand dollars, so there's not additional. The only other money they had was money that was carried over from the prior year. There was some information that we received yesterday from Commissioner Ransaw. They have joined as the lead plaintiff on a lawsuit that kind of explains better what the organization's focus is. The Pacific Legal Foundation, uh, they've joined with them in this litigation, which is designed, or the, the focus of the litigation is a federal requirement. It's called the Congressional Review Act, that anytime a regulatory agency, uh, puts forth a new regulation, that it has to go for the Congressional Review Act, or it has to have congressional approval. And they cite some examples of where this has not occurred. Um, so if it doesn't go through the Congressional Review Act, what happens is if it's something that is considered to be an onerous or a, uh, piece of, uh, of a regulation, that it takes effect without that congressional review. And on the other side of it, if there's a regulation that's promulgated, you don't know that if it's going to last or not. So people aren't able to rely on that. So I guess the focus is, with this litigation, is to make sure that this happens, that these regulations go through Congress and get approved before they become law. Um, this, we've been members of the organization for a couple of years. So again, this is the renewal for the membership for 2018.
Thank you. Uh, this is kind of a watchdog group, uh, above and beyond any, uh, legal things that we do here locally. Uh, it does have a pretty big reach as far as rural areas that it impacts. And Sedgwick County does have a lot of rural, uh, areas within our county. Uh, so unless somebody convinces me differently, and I don't know that they would, but I, I am supportive of continuing our support to KNRC. Chairman, Commissioner Ransaw.
Another thing that I, they're doing is they're, they're looking at what it takes for G-listing petition for the Arkansas Shiner, which I think Dave knows about. Um, they're spending some money, uh, to find out what the process is to do that and, and, and see if there may be a way to, to, to get the feds to do it using, fed with their own money to, to go through this. So there, so that may, that would help public works throughout the whole state. Uh, but, uh, right now, it's about information seeking. We've learned about that process as well.
And how that affects us is that during their mating season, which is like from March to September, we're not allowed when we're building a bridge to get down in the water. So then that makes us have to figure out how to build a bridge and start, hopefully, a lot of times in the wintertime to do whatever we need to do down in the water so that when that, that time period, March to September comes, we're up above it and then we, we can't, we can't get in it then. It's not on all streams. It's on some.
Some of them. So we have less flexibility, uh, when we do some of those projects.
Several critter called?
Arkansas Shiner.
It's a fish?
Yes.
And a minnow?
It's a minnow. I mean, that's.
Very good. Any other comments?
Is this the best way for us to correct that with KNRC?
Well, they're, they're the only organization that I know of, uh, that focuses on the regulatory side of the federal government. Uh, now, they've done a little bit at the state with respective legislation, like KAC will be legislation and, and even, uh, NACO does legislative things. But, uh, what a lot of people don't know of and, and elected officials don't know about, how to use all the rules and regulations in the federal government that have been put in place to impede or force them to listen to local, local communities when they go through that, that regulatory process. Because if we don't participate in it because we don't know about it, then, you know, it all goes through and they just do whatever they want. You see, because, because we didn't have a voice in that. And so I, I'm not aware of any other organization that is dealing on that administrative side of things to try and help have our voice heard and stuff, so.
How long has this group been around?
They were founded in 2013.
Few years. I think the lesser prairie chicken thing is, is what initially got it going. And as it figured out, there's, you know, it can apply to a lot of things, um, like the Arkansas Shiner. I mean, you could try to get legislation to take it out, but if there's a way already administratively that you could use, use to say, hey, you've got to do this. Here's what the rules say. Because, I mean, the rules are so big and onerous, a lot of, a lot of municipalities, and, I mean, you just don't know what they are. And so we don't have any legal expertise. Most places don't know all that stuff, so.
Are you an officer in that group? I mean, you, you're a regular?
I'm reg, I mean, I go to the meetings. I'm not a, not an officer. I would encourage everyone to go if they want to.
Jim, you, you go?
I have not attended the meetings, but I have. I have not attended the meetings, but I have followed their, their group's work, and I think they've done a good job. And right now, I think they've got respect of Kansas Wildlife and Parks, which is a good thing. I view this as a, I view this as another arm of our lobbyist effort. It's fairly affordable, and it's a, it's an important topic, and if not us, then who? I think it holds some groups back and, holds some groups in check. And so I think that, considering the, the relative low cost of this compared to other things we do, and what they're trying to accomplish, I think it's something we ought to be involved in.
You've gone to a meeting?
I've been to one meeting out in Dot City. Any other comments? Do we have a consensus on supporting KNRC? Okay? I think we've got a consensus.
That's what I, I think I saw. Very good. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else?
That's all I have.
You're done?
I'm done.
All right. Okay. Next thing I want to bring up, let me pass this around. Kansas Association of Counties sent us a draft of possible adoption of Code of Ethics, and what I'm passing out now is what KAC provided to us. I'm not saying that we're going to do anything today with it, other than I want to see if we've got a consensus to move ahead and see about maybe adopting a Code of Ethics for our county commissioners. I think each, every one of our commissioners have already seen this in the past. I provided a copy to every one of them in the past, and I've looked through it a number of times. We thought about different things that we wanted to add to it possibly, but each thing that we talked about possibly adding, someplace in here, it already really covers it. I'm not sure if we need to change anything or not, but what I'd like to know today with consensus is, does anyone have a problem with us moving forward and looking at what we need for a Code of Ethics, or if we have a need for a Code of Ethics, first of all, and if we do, whether or not that they would object to us pursuing either this or an edited version of this.
I, I've been thinking for a while if we need a Code of Ethics. I've got some ideas that I've got somebody in legal prime to write up that may be able to augment this. I think we should go through some of these things. But yeah, in general, I'd probably like to amend some of the things we modify or add that would be more specific or something that-
I think that's an option, the modify or add. We, we just need to know if we want legal to start looking at this, and if we want the commissioners to start looking at this, and with the possibility of adopting something in the future. If not, well, we can drop the idea, but if everyone thinks it's a good idea, we'll move ahead. Does anyone not think it's a good idea?
I think it's a good idea.
Good idea.
It's, it's interesting, this is, in my time up here, we've looked at this at least two other occasions, and I think legal was, our legal staff at that time was supporting it, and the manager, and folks want us to do it, and the commissioner says, nah, we're not doing that. So it's probably a good thing that we're addressing it, probably should go forward with the Code of Ethics. But I don't know, how many counties have adopted a Code of Ethics, either this one or another one? Do we, do we have any sense of that?
I don't know that we really know that. I know, I know of at least one, because I've been in communication with them about how that's worked for them, and whether they like that or regret it or whatever. Rio County does have, had it on.
Well, I can't remember what the objections were, but the result was, nah, we're not doing it. But it, I think we probably should go forward.
Okay. Well, I think we have a consensus that we'll move ahead with something. It may not be exactly what we've got in front of us, but we're going to take a look at it.
Well, what we can do is, we've actually kind of taken a crack at it already, come up with a rough draft of a resolution adopting this, and then circulated to commissioners and back to us, suggestions for amendments or something.
Yeah, once you draft the resolution and put something together, as you work the commissioners, then we can find out what we're going to end up with finally. Colonel Powell.
We got an email from Sheriff Easter the other day about a bill that's, that's up at the Topeka Legislature right now, that says we've got to pay $700 for every person that accesses any kind of database at the state level. And that bill, right now, according to Sheriff Easter, is about $385 million per year, is what I heard, which is a little beyond what our means is.
For our, purely for the sheriff's office, our cost would be 385,000.
Oh, thousand, okay. He must added a couple of zeros.
Yeah, exactly. It's a brick shopping thing. But I know the, the budgetary impact statement for the state agencies themselves was somewhere in the neighborhood of about $26 million. And then, of course, there are other entities here within the county also that would probably be affected by that also, that would access other state databases as a part of their normal daily business, which, you know, might include the DA's office, emergency communications, 911, perhaps some other agencies, maybe courthouse police, and it goes on. I know Sheriff Easter is testifying tomorrow, Friday, both in Topeka, and that is on the agenda to be discussed during his testimony.
Okay. Do you need a letter of support from the commission?
At the county level, I know he is testifying, his testimony this week is, as the liaison of the Kansas Sheriff's Association, but I'm sure it can be introduced before the testimony.
Well, the reason I brought it up is, we've got all five commissioners here today, and if we get consensus that we send something up to support Sheriff Easter, I wanted to make sure that they all knew about it. I don't know if the rest of the commissioners had heard about this before, I know Commissioner Ransaw had, but I don't know if the other commissioners had even heard that this is a possibility. So I thought today would be a perfect time when we'd have all five commissioners and Colonel Powell in the room.
Right.
What, what is our lobbyist, what's his response to this? Have we alerted him? Is he-
We alerted him yesterday afternoon, but he was not aware of this until we talked about it yesterday during our conference call.
Well, we need to get him focused on it a little bit. This is a pretty significant amount of money.
And it actually just came out, just, just on Friday, it just popped up out of nowhere.
Do you have a bill number?
I can get those for you, sir, I don't have a list of this one, but I can certainly get, there's a Senate bill and a House bill. I'll send those along.
Well, if we've got support from the commission, I think that we'll get our legislative folks involved in this, we'll get Will Dear and Eric involved, we put together a letter of support. Does anyone have a problem with that?
No, just want to make sure we're coordinated with our lobbyists and the sheriff, and make sure we do this thing the way we should do it.
Probably have them roll the corrections, the 350 employees plus 911, and then $385,000 for the sheriff's, the number you-
Like another 385.
Can I ask a question? The new IT director, I know Governor Carier just put in a, a new IT director, is he supportive of this? Oh, okay.
It's his idea.
It's his idea?
Yeah.
So we, we have a potential exposure then of, up towards a billion dollars?
The way it's worded, it is, the purpose behind the P's requesting DSS deals with cybersecurity and the support and enhancements of the state of Kansas infrastructure, and I believe the intent there is funding of that, to give emphasis of high levels of security. But again, there are, it's interesting in the fact that, first off, we are statutorily mandated to access these resources, and now at the same time, we're going to be statutorily potentially charged to access the resources. On the law enforcement side, if we're talking to such things, as you've probably heard, acronyms NCIC, CGIS, some of the databases that deal with courts, things like that, et cetera. Of course, other public safety agencies and social service agencies will also be affected by that if they're accessing statutory assistance. It's not true that this law-
Good. Well, we'd be happy to support you any way we can, and we'll work with our legal folks, and we'll get something out.
Yeah, we would certainly take that up.
And this is kind of, this is kind of across the board. Next week, I asked the sheriff to, to introduce another topic on tax warrants and some of the administrative costs that have been pushed down with us with those. It's a lot more significant than even I understood it two weeks ago, but having been briefed since, it's a pretty significant issue. So that's going to brief, be briefed next week's staff meeting. So I think the sheriff is getting hit from across the board on many fronts that's ultimately going to, you know, hit our general fund if we don't get in front of it.
Another concern I might add that we have is that the, the differences in the budgetary systems of the state of Kansas versus local agencies and local government, and if this by, by chance should pass, a lot of new statutory guidelines and things that connect to play, a lot of times take effect in July 1 of that year, which our budget's already been set, as every other county's budget has already been set for this year. So we're going to have, if it should happen and take effect July 1, we would have some budgetary concerns needing to this year, that we would also have to do.
Super. Well, we'll put that in a letter too.
I'll look at that information too, if you'd be interested.
Great. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
As we're talking about that, we ought to find out if there's a fiscal note. It'd be important to know what that fiscal note is, because it seems like this would generate an awful lot of money for the state, and I'm not sure they can justify that much money for this problem that's already got funding solutions in place, to be able to transfer that much money into that problem. That'd be, to me, that's, that ought to be an argument that we ought to understand deeply. What's the total fiscal note for this?
There is a fiscal attached on the KAC legislature website.
And I guess I'd also like to know, we need, we need to be engaging our, not just our lobbyists, but KAC ought to be carrying the water on this too. This is going to affect every jurisdiction in the state, not just us. All right, thank you.
Good. Okay. Last thing that I've got, somebody else might have something else, is what's an update on our admin building? Can you tell us anything about where we're at?
Yep. We have since got access agreement assigned with the owners of River View Building and the master leaseholder, and we are in the process of going in and doing an analysis, structural analysis of the building. And then based off of that, we hope that by the end of March, the beginning of April, after the due diligence period, that we would have an answer, or at least a, a true cost or true understanding of whether we want to get into a purchase agreement with the, with the owners. On a side note of that, we are continuing, based off of the BOCC meeting, we are continuing to analyze what the cost of a new building would be per your direction. And then also, during the process, when we were, when we were doing the analysis of buildings, Steve Martin brought us a collection of buildings, if you remember. One of the buildings that they, that he brought us was 150 North Main. That has since come, come back as a potential, we ruled it out based off of it was, it would take a lot of, of money to be able to fix it. We have since learned that potentially it could be coming back up, and so we're doing an analysis of that to see what it would cost and what that would look like to, to purchase that, potentially purchase that building.
Yeah. My concern on that building is lifecycle cost, just like my concern was on the River View Building. That doesn't have any parking to speak of over there, and lifecycle cost of parking at that building, looks to me like it would probably be prohibitive, because if we've got to pay for a couple hundred parking spots every year for the next 50, 100 years, right, that, that's just David Dennis speaking, but it just doesn't even seem realistic to me.
Well, there were other issues when we first looked at it that since have gone away. You know, we were really concerned, there were multiple different people who owned the building, and, and since it has actually come under new management. This particular developer was looking to build apartments there, but because we're inundated with apartments now downtown, he's looking at potentially selling this building. So, you know, there is different math than what it was when we did our initial analysis of it, that, that does cause us to look at it again, just to make sure, based off of the new, new variables, whether we still want to, you know, potentially look at it for our future use or not. So there is some, some more analysis we need to do based off the new variables, new owner, and, and look at the parking, look at the, the different costs it would take us to, to make it usable. But it kind of goes back to what you were wanting in terms of what would a new building cost, and whether it would be, because anything done to this building would be a total gut on the inside. The only difference is, is that we have a shell to work with as opposed to having to raise the shell. So in lines with what you're asking for, this may be a better answer, but it, it needs to take us, we need to do the analysis, just to see.
Okay, but don't just look at the building, look at what the cost of going into that building is.
Absolutely.
And what's the number of parking spaces, as a general number, do we need? And I know it depends on who moves and all that, but-
300 total. 300.
300.
Which includes employees and customer property.
And who owns that 150 building? Are you sitting in it?
It's actually owned by a bank.
Okay.
Who owns it?
It's a, it's a bank owns it.
Okay. And how many parking places are there?
There's 80, 70 to 80 parking places affixed to that property, and then there is a parking garage immediately to the north that previous tenants have used. You're, you're exactly right. We'd either have to negotiate long-term lease or a purchase of some of those parking places.
Mr. Ransaw? So I'm a little confused. We had a commission decision in an open meeting to look at where we, the River View Building, and maybe new, I mean, are we opening this back up to all buildings, or just this 150 North Main?
No, we're not opening it back up to all buildings.
Why not?
We, I mean, for us, we had ruled out the other buildings.
But we ruled out this one too.
But, but again, there has been some variable changes in this building that we didn't know about before, so it's, it's at least take, it's at least worth taking a look.
Well, there may be variables changing in other buildings. I mean, listen, you know, I, I'm just going to put this out there, but, you know, we can't have commissioners cherry picking buildings for their friends. Now, Michael, you can confirm whether what I'm hearing is true or not, but I've been told that this started because of Commissioner O'Donnell, talking to David Wells, one of his friends, about maybe getting this building and renovating it and selling it to us. This used to be owned by the Minnesota guys. Now, if we're going to, we, we can't keep doing this. We made a decision in an open meeting. If we want to open it up to everything, because things have changed, that's fine. But I, I guess this doesn't look good, gentlemen. When all of us sit behind the scenes, the commissioner tells the staff to go, go look at this building, here, I've talked to a friend of mine. Well, that's not, we've got Steve Martin's involved, a broker, to get commissioners out, out of this, and we make the decision in public, public meeting, either we open it back up for everybody, or we don't open it up at all. That's my position. I'm not going to be involved, and I'm saying this publicly, in, in this long line of shenanigans that's going on. It's, it, it doesn't look good for us, and it's going to look even worse in the future. And it's going to look even worse in the future.
Well, I don't, I don't know that we're at the point that this is a consideration, one way or the other.
We've got staff working on something that was, we had never discussed in open meeting because a particular commissioner wants them to. Okay? Now, if we're all five going to start cherry picking our own people, that would be chaos. Okay? And it's not appropriate. It's not appropriate. Either we open it back up for everything and have our broker go reanalyze everything.
Did Steve Martins bring this back to you? Have you talked to him at all?
Not, no, not since he initially brought it to us.
Well, for right now, I would concentrate on the possibility of building a building. I would concentrate on Riverview Building. And if Steve Martins says that there's some other options out there, then we need to take a look at them.
So, that means that you are eliminating consideration of 150 building?
It depends on what Steve Martins has to say.
We'll contact Steve.
Well, I appreciate what Richard has to say. But even though we're kind of heading in this direction and we've made some decisions, if someone comes up with a really good idea or something that needs consideration, we haven't signed a deal yet. I'm going to, if someone says, hey, I got a great idea, just thought of this. I'm, I'm ready to at least hear it and, you know, spend an hour or two figuring out, does this work or not work?
I agree. We need to do, though, what's best for our citizens.
Yeah.
That, that's fine. But let's get it out on the market that we're still entertaining offers from everybody, not just one that's cherry picked by a particular commissioner. That's, that's not right. Okay? That's not why we got Martins, I mean, we got Martins involved to avoid that sort of situation. And now, we're back into it again. And it's just a continued continuation of theme that's been going on, gentlemen.
As long as we are still in the market for anything right now, we're going to have people that come up and offer suggestions. We had someone wanting to give us.
We didn't have someone. We had a commissioner initiate this. That needs to stop.
No, but we didn't have someone advance, advance the idea of the old.
Chester Lewis Academy?
Yeah, yeah.
The old Northwest.
They wrote several of them.
They did, and they emailed everybody, and the manager took over. We didn't have a specific commissioner behind the scenes say, hey, go get this. I talked to my friend over here. Here's a new deal. That needs to stop. Please, stop rationalizing what's going on here. It needs to stop.
Well, we're going to do what's right for our citizens and our taxpayers. That's the bottom line.
And that's fine.
If this comes up to be something that Steve Martins says we should look at and it's right for our citizens and taxpayers, at that point, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. But we need, if we're going to do that, I think we need to tell Steve Martins to put the word out on the street that we'll listen to anyone and everybody. But otherwise, I mean, that's the fair thing to do. I mean, because at least my perception is that we put Steve Martins out and said, look at all these things. We narrowed it down. We made a decision. So, that would probably infer to everybody else, all right, you know, we're done. But if that's not the case, then let's send it back out to everybody in the community. We will still listen to everybody. That's what we've got to do.
And also, even with the Chester Lewis Academy, you know, when it was advanced to me to analyze it, I responded to all commissioners. So, even in this 150 North Main, I'm not keeping anything from any commissioner. That's why I just brought it up, is we are doing analysis on it. It makes sense. It was advanced to us, but it was one that we did look at in the past. So, I will make sure that all commissioners are aware of what, what staff is working on in regards to the billing. So, and keeping it in that process. So, you know, that's, that's why I just advanced it and made sure everybody was on the same sheet of music in terms of what we're doing for it. I'm not going to hide that from anybody. And we'll make sure that we keep it in that type of process. You know, Steve Martins would advance a building to us. He's not really part of the analytical side of looking at the building and the analysis part of it. It's, it's the staff. We're the ones that did that. And we'll do that for 150 North Main, as well as the potential of a new building. And then, even that, Commissioner, you had brought up the fact of even looking back at some of the old options that we had for modifying this building.
I talked about that in, in open meeting, in our county commission meeting. That's what I talked about.
Right. And so, that's why I'm bringing that up, is so everybody has an understanding that that is going to be looked at, too.
When everything is said and done, we're going to do what's right for our taxpayers and our citizens. That's the bottom line.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anything else? Anything else?
What are we doing about the RFP for an auctioneer for the Graham?
It goes to bid board Thursday, and you should see it next week on the B O C C meeting.
Okay. And then, after that, we set it time and all that other stuff.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
I'm thinking, but.
You're thinking? Well, keep thinking. I apologize. Commissioner O'Donnell, anything? Mr. Allen, anything?
The only thing I'd say is, K A C is offering the workplace harassment training tomorrow during our meeting, same time, Wednesday, nine o'clock. But it'll be available after the fact. And so, I'd like to, I've been trying to access some of their access, some of their online videos. I continue to have trouble getting access to that. I think we paid their, I think we paid them money, $50, I don't think it was. Just managed, we paid $50 to the K A C for access to their video library, I believe. But having said that, I'm still, I think we still have trouble getting it done. So, I would say that's one I think we ought to certainly have access to. I'd like to get that done, but it's not as easy as it sounds. Since we can't do it live, I think, by the way, that training's actually happening live in Oatchata during, you know, during our meeting tomorrow, nine o'clock.
Right.
But we can look at it after the fact. The problem is, we've got to get the passwords and the membership things all worked out. So, that's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
I'll put that on my punch list.
Thank you.
All right. Anything from an elective? Well, you have one elective. Colonel Powell, anything else?
I have one alibi. You had mentioned earlier that you wanted to talk about NACO. Is that something that you still wanted to talk about?
Do we need to discuss as far as community development, NACO? I don't see any discussion. Okay? Anything else around the table?
All right.
Very good. Thank you all.